Hello.
Hi, Deborah.
Oh, councilmember.
Good evening.
Councilmember Lamas is having issues with his camera. So just give him a couple extra minutes. And we'll see if he's able to join us.
Recording in progress.
We are live on YouTube. Resto the council members.
Did something change? My screen doesn't have the raise your hand symbol no more.
Mine doesn't either.
I apologize. That is because it is my link that set up the Zoom meeting. But I will see if I can pull that in. That might be a setting that I would have had to have done when setting up the link. So I think let's try to use the chat if that's okay. If a council member would like to speak. Okay. Or, or yes. Or you could raise your hand. That would work too.
Is the only person missing right now council member Refugio? Yamas?
He has joined us, but I'm not so sure if his camera's working. Oh, there he is.
Okay. So we're ready? Hey, good evening.
Is everybody here that you need?
I, I think we have all the council members on board. Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the adjourned city council meeting for July 20th. Temporary public comments. Email established for the City of Los Angeles City Council meeting through July 20th, 2001. Emails must be received by 4:00 P.M. The city has established a temporary email address. Citizens can use to email public comments on any agenda item, limited to 250 words or less. Any public comments received by July 20th, 2021, prior to 4:00 P.M. Will be read aloud during the appropriate time and agenda item. The email address is cityclerk@lostbannos.org. Public comments during public hearings will be taken in real time via email. Once the public hearing is open, the city council will pause the meeting in order to receive emails directed to the public hearing, up to 250 words, and will read comments into records after resuming the meeting as time permits. Please indicate, please indicate that comments are for a particular public hearing by putting "public hearing" in the subject line of the email and the title of the public hearing. The council chambers are closed to the public. Those interested in viewing the city council meeting can do so by going to City of Los Angeles website on YouTube. By the time I'd like to call the city council meeting to the order. And the time is 4:02 P.M. Commander Reyna, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commander Reyna.
At this time, I'd like to ask our city clerk to please bring forth a, excuse me, roll call.
Jones?
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Lamas?
Here.
Aria.
And we do have a forum this evening. Item number four. I would like to entertain a motion for the approval on tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem Lewis, Councilmember Lambert, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor Pro Tem. Yeah, I'm sure I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Lambert and a second by councilmember Yamas. Could we have a roll call, please?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamas?
Yes.
Aria.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item of public interest that is, that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, including agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. The public may submit their comments by submitting a written statement, by dropping it off in the utility box at City Hall 520 J Street, by mailing or emailing cityclerk@lostbannos.org. Comments received will be read into record during the city council meeting. And to our city clerk, Maloney, do we have any public comments at this point?
I've received three public comments, but it's related to the workshop on the general plan. So I don't know if you'd like me to read those now or during the item.
Well, we're getting ready to start that item. So since there's not going to be any public interaction on, on this agenda item, why don't we go on and read it now?
Okay, the first comment that I received is from Ellen Ware. It's from the Grassland Water District. And I received it by email. And it's a five-page document. And I believe all five council members received this same email regarding, please find attached a comment letter from Grassland Water District that provides written feedback in advance of the upcoming public workshop on the city's general plan update. So Stacy, I'll ask you if I need to read this into the record? Or is there receipt by email enough?
Us noting that we've received that comment letter. And Dan, we do have our special land use attorney, Dan Kuci from Abbott and Kinderman on with us. But just to confirm that noting that we've received that comment letter is sufficient. I do know, I think Lucy received another comment letter from Grasslands that we will read into the record.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
I think Dan is, I'm sorry.
Just say yes, yes. All the council members have it. And we've made a clear to the public that they have received.
Okay. The next comment that I received is from Central California Irrigation District. Under the Sustainable Ground Management Act, the City of Los Angeles established itself as an independent groundwater sustainability agency and adopted the Exchange Contractor Ground Waters Sustainability Plan. Whereas initially, the Department of Water Resources indicated they would focus only on problems, GSA's within any water groundwater sub-basin found to have a deficient plan were not meeting the objectives within their plan. Recently, the state water board has indicated that they will deem all GSA's within a sub-basin as unsustainable for the values of any GSA or GSP. Currently, our sub-basin is in a state of overdraft and subsidence, and the city's GSA is independently in a state of overdraft. The GSPs were established to achieve sustainability by year 2040 with mandatory milestones every five years demonstrating progress. Planned growth for the city must be in tandem with planned groundwater sustainability. Further growth without consideration for its impact so the sub-basin's water balance jeopardizes all 23 GSA's within the sub-basin. Agriculture has been and is the heart of the local economy and culture. The Central California Irrigation District and the City of Los Angeles have had a long history of partnership and collaboration with respect to community development. The City of Los Angeles is an integral to CCID as CCID is to the city. As such, CCID would like to invite and implore the city to formally engage in a workshop with CCID and Grassland Water District prior to any formal modification to the boundaries in its general plan. And it signs sincerely Benjamin Fenters, Deputy General Manager, Water Resources. And the next email is from Rick Ortega. Thank you for considering the Grassland Water District written comment letter and meeting with local water managers to discuss the city's planned future growth and the implications to water supply, water quality, and stormwater. Today, my comments focus on the specific suggestions from the Grassland Water District's comment letter. First, we would like to work with you all on the city's open space policies as we have done in the past. We aren't convinced that the city can establish an area of interest north of the city that is compatible with the county's planning policies for the grassland focus area. These policies are very strict and will not support future urban land uses. Second, expanding the sphere of influence boundary to the east to encompass city-owned land would require stringent open space policies to protect the wetland resources located there. Third, we remain very concerned about extending the city limit and establishing commercial zoning for the parcels along the peninsula of land that extends east of the city and north of State Route 152. The city has specific policies in place that prohibit the development of peninsulas into open space and further encroachment into habitat. Zoning needs to be addressed in a careful manner that recognize the proximity to habitat and the continued location of the planned S Sar 152 bypass. Finally, GWD supports a one-to-one agricultural mitigation policy, recognizing that extensive conversion of agricultural land is not a feasible or desirable outcome for the areas surrounding this city. Respectfully, Rick Ortega, General Manager, Grassland Water and Resource Conservation Districts. And those are the three comments that I've received.
Okay, thank you very much, City Clerk Maloney. We'll move on to item number six. Workshop regarding the general plan update boundary map and agriculture land preservation policy. And I would like to turn this over to our Community and Economic Development Director, Elms.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem Lewis and city council members. And so this workshop is just a part of our ongoing process of our general plan update, which was launched back in 2017. Tonight's focus this evening will be on boundaries. So we are going to talk about the sphere of influence or urban growth boundary and city limits, but as well as a new concept of an area of interest. And then if we have enough time, we are hoping to have a discussion about preservation of agricultural resources and potential policies to preserve those resources. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Joanna Jansen from Placeworks. Placeworks, as you may recall, is our consulting firm that the city has partnered with in helping us prepare our general plan update. Joanna?
Thank you, Stacy. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thanks for confirming. Yes, I'm gonna share my screen and then I will give you a brief presentation. We have two topics on the agenda tonight that are covered in this presentation. One has to do with planning boundaries and the other has to do with agricultural mitigation. I'm gonna go through the first part of the presentation, including the planning boundaries discussion, and then pause there and we'll kind of see where we stand and decide, you know, how much progress we make and then whether, when, and how to continue to the second part of the presentation regarding agricultural mitigation. Give me just one second. All right, so, oh, I'm sorry. Hang on, I started it wrong. And slide. So I just mentioned that I have two parts to the presentation. And the first part has to do with the planning boundaries. So let me walk through the planning boundaries. I know that the council members have seen this information before, but for the benefit of members of the public or anyone else, just a refresher on the boundaries that we're going to be speaking about this evening. The first and smallest is the city limits. And, and this is the area where the city has jurisdiction and where the city is required to provide services. So that's the white line that you can see on this map along this edge. This is the current city limits of the city of Los Angeles. And this is where the city has jurisdiction outside of this boundary is currently under the jurisdiction of Merced County until and unless this boundary is changed through a formal legal annexation process. The next boundary that we're going to talk about is the urban growth boundary. The urban growth boundary is a tool that the city has adopted in your existing general plan to manage urban development with the goal of keeping that development compact and efficient. Because as I mentioned previously, the city has a obligation to serve urban development within the city limits. So developing efficiently is very much in the city's interest. Changes to this boundary, because this is a boundary purely created and adopted by the city. The city can make changes to the boundary without the approval of an outside agency, such as the county or LAFCO. But there are certain findings that the council needs to make in order to change the urban growth boundary. The urban growth boundary is outside of city limits. And so it does not give the city jurisdiction over the land outside of the city limits. It's simply an indication of the city of plans for future urban development. And this is, this map shows both your existing and proposed urban growth boundary in orange. Solid line is your existing urban growth boundary adopted in your current general plan. And the dotted areas on this map show some proposed changes that the council has discussed at past public hearings. So here, this would change the urban growth boundary to match the city limits in this peninsula area that you heard about in your comment letter a few minutes ago. This dashed line would change the urban growth boundary to follow Pioneer Road, as has been considered at a previous council meeting and other discussions. Similarly, this dashed line kind of moves the urban growth boundary slightly to the west to follow parcel lines and canal rather than splitting parcels in this area as it currently is. So that's the urban growth boundary. Thirdly, we want to talk about the sphere of influence, also called the SOI. So the sphere of influence is defined by LAFCO policy as the ultimate physical boundary and service area of the city where urban development is going to be allowed. Only areas within the SOI are available for annexation by the city. That doesn't mean that an annexation within the SOI is always a guaranteed to happen. But you may not pursue annexations of lands that is not within your SOI. The way that amendments to the SOI work is that the city can propose those amendments to LAFCO, which is the Local Area Formation Commission. It's an agency that each county has. So this is for the Merced County LAFCO. They have jurisdiction over boundaries, including the SOI. So they would then consider and either approve or deny this city's request for an SOI amendment. In considering that proposal, LAFCO would, both their policies and conversations with staff have indicated that they would give great weight to agreement between this county, Merced County and the city on an appropriate SOI. However, it's important to understand that LAFCO has sole authority over SOIs. So it's really at the LAFCO board's discretion to approve or not approve the proposed amendment by the city. It's also possible for LAFCO to propose a different SOI to the city in response to a proposed SOI amendment. This, I'm gonna show you a couple different slides about SOI in Los Angeles, but I want to start with this one. Very important to understand that this is the current adopted sphere of influence for SOI for Los Angeles, the yellow line that you see here. This is what's in place right now. This has been in place since, I believe, about 2004, which was when it was approved by LAFCO. And again, it's this yellow line that you see on this aerial. This is your current adopted sphere of influence per LAFCO. Now, when we started thinking about changes to the SOI, LAFCO staff suggested to us that one possible tool that the city may want to consider is something called an area of interest or AOI. So LAFCO has policies that describe the area of interest as areas outside of the SOI where county land use changes may impact city planning efforts and where therefore coordinated or joint planning is encouraged. So again, this doesn't mean that it gives the city jurisdiction or control over these areas. These areas remain under the control of the county. But it is assigned to the county or other agencies that planning decisions in this area affects the city and the city wants to be involved in collaborative planning efforts. So any decisions about what areas get designated as an AOI must be agreed upon by both the county and the city. Development in AOIs is usually limited to agriculture or open space type of uses. And AOIs do not indicate that the city is ultimately going to grow into these areas or annex these areas or serve these areas. Right now, an AOI would be used to indicate, again, an interest in shared and coordinated planning efforts. It is possible in the future to add an AOI to an SOI. So you can start with an area of interest. And then it's possible that that in the future could become part of the SOI. So taking into account the feedback from LAFCO staff, the conversations with Merced County staff and other stakeholders in the area that you heard about previously and that are describing your staff report, staff and place works have come up with this recommended combination of a proposed amended SOI with the addition of new areas of interest. So the city does not currently have any areas of interest. This would be a new tool for the city for coordinated planning in the areas surrounding Los Angeles. And this figure shows all the boundaries that we've talked about so far, as well as the proposed SOI and potential proposed areas of interest. So let me just explain briefly what you're looking at. The white line, again, that's the existing city limits. That's the only area over which the city has jurisdiction. The yellow line is, again, your adopted sphere of influence. So the city adopted this line in 1999. We also, we often refer to it as 2099. And SOI LAFCO sometimes might refer to it as the 2004 SOI because that's when they approved it. So this is your current sphere of influence in yellow. Everything that's shaded in blue with the kind of darker blue or purple outline, that would be the proposed SOI based on staff's recommendation. So that extends further to the west. Then your existing SOI, there's some expansion here along this curve that kind of follows the alignment of the future bypass. Expansion here to take in areas that are actually within the existing city limits and therefore should be within the SOI. So that's the areas of SOI expansion from your adopted SOI. And then what you see here in the green hash to the diagonal lines, those are potential areas of interest to consider. So this would go north from the SOI up to Henry Miller Road and out to Volta. And then follow a line along the western edge here, kind of lining up with the edge of the SOI, and then south to Copadoro.
Before we move forward, I do have a question on this map. Up the top northern eastern part of the map, there's like a little smokestack or a finger up there. Keep going to the east, east one, east side, east. We're on the west side right now. Go east.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, keep going.
Oh, that's.
Right there, yeah.
Yes.
That, there's purple around that. And there's also at the Arroyo Canal, there's a flag out there. Go up, go up north a little bit more, over, over to the east. Just, yeah, that one there. Those two areas have city limit lines around, around them, but they also have the purple line for SOI around it. So could you explain a little bit why, why that's, you know, considered SOI when in fact it's already in the city limits?
So, welcome Stacy. Anybody else to jump in here? But we're suggesting to add them to the SOI exactly because they are currently inside the city limits. So this is, are the only areas that are inside Los Angeles city limits that are not inside the SOI. And it would be most typical for everything And it would be most typical for everything in a city, any city's city limits to be inside that city's sphere of influence, kind of by definition. Like, everything in the city limits is in this SOI, but the SOI can be larger than the city limits.
For consistency purposes, uh, we wanted to make sure that everything within the incorporated city limits was within the uh the sphere of influence, within the SOI. So it's really the purpose of including those areas. Those have no um plans for urban development. Uh, those are areas for the wastewater treatment plant, and that's why uh they are um actually land that's owned by the city, and that's why they are in the city limits. Um, but for consistency purposes, um, we felt that it was reasonable to include that within that boundary.
All right, thank you very much. So just to briefly reinforce the point that Stacy just made, when we go back to the urban growth boundary, that kind of shows the city's idea about future urban development. These areas, these lands are owned by the city, these lands are inside the city limits, but they are outside of the city's urban growth. Uh, so again, this is the recommended um proposed amended SOI and new areas of interest on this. And then this slide is just, I guess I could have bonded this slide, so I'm taking guys all the way back. This slide is just um combining all of the boundaries that we've talked about before on one map. Um, the, with, so really the only difference here is the addition of um urban growth boundaries. So you can kind of see this all in one place, if that's useful to uh council discussion as we move forward. Um, so when, to, tonight, we're here with you because we are interested in your discussion about um proceeding with the recommended proposed boundaries that I just showed. Uh, this is a very important step for us in preparing the draft general plan for public review. Uh, we are interested in hearing from the city council about whether you support the recommended draft proposal for the sphere of influence and the areas of interest boundaries uh on the preceding slide. Uh, and then similarly, interested in your discussion about the urban growth boundary, do you support the recommended draft proposal for the urban growth boundary in the two thousand and forty um general plan? Uh, and just to be clear about where we are in this process, uh, we anticipate that we would like to, pending, you know, in part, tonight's discussions and other steps, release the draft general plan this fall. Then it will go through um public review, including uh meetings of the planning commission and the city council. And then, of course, we are obligated by state law to prepare an environmental impact report, or EIR, on the draft general plan that would disclose any potential environmental impacts and also be required to propose feasible and implementable mitigations for any impacts uh that are identified. And that would be released in, uh, if these other steps happen um on that timeline, that would be released in early two thousand and twenty-two. That's also a public document, it's subject to public review, public comment. Um, and so there are still several very important steps in this process of publishing the draft general plan, publishing the draft EIR, and having ongoing public dialogue about the content of both of those documents before the council would be ready to consider anything for adoption. And so that is, and again, just really can't enforce this point enough. Once, let's say that we did get to the draft general plan adoption, um, with uh whatever the ultimate determination is about sphere of influence or area of influence, just to, again, to say that that those, that would represent the city's proposal for what you would like those boundaries to be. There would be subsequent steps of negotiation, um, and approval with both um negotiation with Merced County and then approval through Merced LAFCO.
So Joanna, I just want to take a minute before we dive deeper into the discussion of the boundaries um to, to take this moment to address some of the comments that we received. Um, and I want to make that clear, um, that staff in the proposed boundary, um, you know, so with placeworks, with consultation um of our consulting team, really looked at what was realistic and feasible in, in those boundaries. And so that's a staff's technical um proposal to the city council tonight, based on the feedback that we did hear, um, starting from the March thirtieth workshop with the city council, the direction we received, and then feedback from um the various stakeholders within the community, including our, our water districts um that we met one-on-one with. Um, I do want to address that um there are multiple steps in any type of annexation proposal. Um, it is not just, you know, a one-sided, and I know the council knows this, but for the record, to state that it, it's not just a process where the city council has ultimate authority. I think Joanna said that multiple times already uh so far in the presentation. But I do want to stress that capacity of infrastructure is a part of that analysis. So the city, a part of the environmental impact report of a annexation, so that environmental analysis would have to provide an analysis on capacity of infrastructure. And then in addition to that, then if, if the project got approved through the city council and was able to justify uh capacity or provide mitigation, um, if, if mitigation was needed, or to provide new infrastructure, um, that would be a, a, a product, a byproduct of that development moving forward. That, that proposal would still have to go to LAFCO and would then be analyzed there. That annexation would have to have a municipal service review done, so the city, not only would we have to determine whether the city could incorporate, uh, so once incorporated, provide that infrastructure, water, sewer, storm to that new development, but it would also have a review on how that impacts the city's existing services and our existing citizens. So there's multiple levels um to that review. It's not done in a vacuum, and it's not done um with a general plan update. It, it, it would require typically and historically annexations uh that have been through the city of Los Banas um are privately driven by development. So it would require a farmer to sell um to a developer, and then um it would have to be orderly growth, so it would be growth uh contiguous with the city, would have to meet certain findings for the council to even consider a proposal. Uh, we're providing policies within the general plan as, as we reviewed, um, you know, back in March to define what findings would need to be in place before an annexation would even be considered by a city council. Um, and I do want to reiterate that the market would dictate that growth, the need for that growth. And then in addition, we go back to LAFCO, LAFCO would have that ultimate decision, that determination to determine whether it's even needed, it is even necessary for that annexation. If it is just a want, um, and then there's no justification, the market is not there to support that uh land being incorporated into the city, or the city doesn't have the capacity to support that development, then that annexation would not be approved. So there, there are lots of checks and balances and layers that happen. A general plan is just that, it's a planning document that's required by the state of California to help us plan for the future. Uh, but it does not mean that the city is annexing or incorporating land uh tomorrow. It's just to help guide development, um, should the, we have the ability or need um extra growth within the incorporated city limits. Um, I did also want to address um a comment that was made that um, the area of influence is not necessary. And really, when, when taking into consideration that approach, uh, which really came about as, as provided within the staff report as a discussion with Merced County Planning and Merced County LAFCO, that um staff had, um, we felt that that was a solution and, and it would provide an answer for the council that the council was seeking. So the council was seeking, what we heard back in March, to expand the sphere of influence um in some areas, just to be able to have influence, to be able to have that conversation with Merced County on what would happen in our backyard. Um, and so if we're not proposing urban development, then um in that area, then the county said, and uh specifically, Merced County LAFCO suggested using an area of interest. So we do feel that that is important. Uh, where that tool would be solidified, would it be with the city and the county's tax revenue sharing agreement? That's where we would solidify how that consultation with the county would work. So staff does feel, and, and, and with our discussions with, with not only LAFCO, but also uh county planning staff, that that was a solution to have the city at the table. So an area of interest, um, and, and typically those areas that are within the county zoning, um, as one of the comment letters said, you know, that there are strict rules within the county's general plan. It wouldn't even allow for development, um, which, sure, but we want to be at the table. We want to be consulted with any development in our backyard that is under the jurisdiction of the county that we feel this is impacted by the city of Los Banas. So whether it's another agricultural use, um, that still falls within their zoning requirements in their general plan, we, we would like to have that conversation. So we felt that that was important, and we also felt that that's what the council was also desiring to have. Um, also, we do believe that ag mitigation, um, we is, and, and which is something we will be, you know, which will be the next topic that we're going to be getting into, but really is a separate topic altogether from the boundaries. And staff does not believe that we would be using that tool to expand the city's sphere by any means. That's not the intent of staff, and, and I don't think that's the desire of the city council. Um, and there are policies within the general plan, not only our existing general plan, but will be coming out in the draft that will strengthen and prohibit leapfrog development. Um, and again, LAFCO would not even support that type of growth. There has to be managed growth, it needs to be um realistic and feasible growth, um, and needs to be justified. And um, and, and we really see the, the boundaries and the sphere as a completely different topic. Yes, we're, we, we combine them because they are both very important topics, and staff is seeking direction on both of those items, but they are not to be combined or commingled, as one of the comment letters had suggested, that we were using ag mitigation to expand our sphere. That's really not the intent of um us wanting to address in our, the staff's desire to, to seek direction on um the preservation of agricultural resources. Um, also, I just want to then um close out that um certainly this is not the end of discussions of the general plan update. Um, this is only a part of the process, and there will be um a lot more discussion. Um, there will be discussion on open space, um, and those policies and those different elements within the general plan. Um, we felt that tonight's workshop, we did want to focus down on these two specific topics, and we didn't want to broadly talk about the entire general plan, uh, because that's a lot to chew in one night. And, and we felt that even these two items, these two topics were, were meaty, um, even for, even one night to discuss. But we wanted to focus tonight on um this, the direction on the boundaries, and um hopefully we can get to agricultural mitigation. Uh, but this isn't the end of those discussions, and we will certainly be engaging our stakeholders, definitely the water districts, um, and our stakeholders that we've been engaging thus far. Um, as they've been helping, we've, we've, we've been listening to their feedback. We have tried to incorporate what we can, um, with the city's interest in mind, and that's what we're providing to you tonight, is our technical recommendation on what staff feels um would be feasible and reasonable to move forward with. Um, so I'll stop there, and um I'll turn it back over to you, Joanna, and we can dive in a little deeper to boundaries.
Okay, thank you, um, Stacy. So uh, again, uh, council members, just want to go back to our questions. Do you support the recommended draft proposal for the sphere of influence and areas of intru- influence? And do you support recommended draft proposal for the urban growth boundary? And so again, you've seen the various maps that we have, I'm happy to pull up whatever maps are most useful to you. Um, this is the, the one image that combines all of the boundaries that we're uh asking for your feedback on tonight.
So Joanna, is it possible that maybe we can go through, um, we'll just take it one bite at a time, and we can dissect the boundaries, um, um, possibly starting with, um, the urban growth boundary, just because it's the first and the legend that I see, I also see we have a question, uh, we have a, a hand up by a council member, uh, but just going through each of the boundaries one by one.
Yeah, of course, and again, you know, council members, please let me know which map is most useful to you. If you'd like to look at them all combined, or if you prefer for me to pull up the map that shows one boundary at a time, I'm happy to do whatever's most useful. Stacy, I, I can't see the hands, are you going to call on folks, sir?
Um, Joanna, we don't have a hand uh option in this particular screen tonight, so uh, what we've asked the council members to do is raise their hand if they have a question or want to speak, and then I'll uh acknowledge them.
Very good.
And, and I see, I'll see on my, let me see if I can change the view on my screen here.
Working on the same thing.
I threw my hand up for a second, but I was just, I, I think Stacy just answered my question over the certain, going over each certain boundary, but my question actually was going to be, uh, you were saying something about that AOI, was it really needed, or you just got it up there now just to, to show us the, the proposed AOI? That was going to be my question, but Stacy answered it, but we're going to go over each boundary.
Okay, and then Brett has a hand raised. No, Brett figured out how to raise his hand. However, you did that, Brett.
All I did was just click the little button, so simple. I, I have a little quick question. Over there on uh Los Banas Creek on the south side, where it comes up to Madera Road, there's like this little boot cut out. What's the purpose of that? Instead of a straight line down Pioneer?
So I can answer that. Um, that is, so already existing within the sphere, and it looked like that was um area, I think potentially at one point for an expansion of a well site. Uh, we do have plans for a future expansion of a well site in that general vicinity. Um, I'm not sure that it will actually be there. Um, but it um is already within the sphere of influence, and we kept it there um just to maintain moving forward.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm not really a fan of keeping things just to keep them in a certain place, just because they were there before. Uh, if it is going to be a well site in the future, it'd be nice to designate it that, so it's not a development site for private use or something like that, uh, because like I've mentioned before, what's to stop us from just inching a little bit over to the left, and a little bit over to the right, and a little bit more south once we go past the Pioneer Road? So that's my uh, my concern with that little boot there that we're leaving. If it has a specific purpose, let's identify it, mark it, and uh put restrictions on it. So uh, we can use it for that intended purpose, but if there's no purpose of it, just clean it up and get rid of it. So that's all.
Okay, does anybody else have a question? I, I'm not sure if I have a full screen to see everyone's hand. I don't see um any hands at this point. I do have a question uh in the presentation. Early on, it, it was indicated that um that the city would have to have findings, the city council would have to make findings uh for uh urban growth boundaries. Could, could you expand on that a little bit more to let us know what that means and what type of findings that we're looking at, that we would have to do in order to uh fulfill that process?
Well, um, I know that some of those. Well, um I know that some of those findings have to do with, for example, um you know, the the land needs to be um contiguous with the urban growth boundary. So it can't be like a, you know, uh leapfrog way out here, for example. Um and also that there is not adequate land available within the existing urban growth boundary to um accommodate the additional um growth. Uh there's also a possibility of making a finding that, you know, there's a specific uh issue of public health and safety, um you know, that that would need to be addressed and could only be addressed by uh changing the urban growth boundaries. So it's it's along those lines. These are in your existing general plan, Stacy, are you gonna add to that?
Right, uh so I have the general plan in front of me. It's one, two, three, four. There are seven findings specifically. Um like Joanna said, they are specific, uh there has to be um specific evidence in the record to justify those findings. Uh so a natural manmade disaster um that has occurred that warrants the provision of housing and/or community needs. Um and it's uh located outside of the urban growth boundary, so that could be a reason. Um um another could be that um a study has been determined that um the city needs it that what is out within the urban growth boundary is preventing the city from providing its fair share of housing as required by um the state of California. Another finding would be that the um land is subject to changes immediately adjacent to developed land and water sewer connections are available. Uh that there is no vacant land available within the urban growth boundary to accommodate the proposed development. It is not reasonably feasible to accommodate the proposed development by redesigning land within the urban growth boundary. Uh that the changes required to comply with California or federal law. Um and then the last one is that project level and cumulative impacts affecting environmental resources, particularly within the grasslands, ecological area, will be mitigated to less than significant levels. So all of those findings um would need to be a part of the record. Um and it says that um it would have to be done after making and holding a public hearing. Uh one or more of the following findings does need to be a part of the record. So it doesn't have to be all of them. Um but I would think that um the project level and cumulative impacts on the grasslands, ecological area would be a finding that would apply um to every type of um amendment to the urban growth boundary that would be proposed. That answers that question.
Yes, it does, thank you. Are are there any other questions of staff? Okay, uh Stacy, uh how would you, how would, how do we need to proceed at this point?
So Joanna, uh do you want to um keep moving forward with um one boundary at a time? I don't see, and um Mayor Pro Tim Lewis, I will help you with the hands raised and I know Gary's checking as well. Um so we'll we'll be checking through, toggling back and forth, making sure that um we don't have any raised hands, which I don't see at this time. Um so Joanna, if you wanna move forward?
Okay, great. Um so that I can see the map, I am also gonna minimize my screen that shows the um all of you. So yes, please do kind of call out if somebody's raising their hand or I need to um change something that I'm doing, I cannot see you right now so that I can see the map. Um so again, we have these, each each boundary individually. Uh it's been suggested that we start with the urban growth boundary. That is um this orange line, the dashed orange line represents um our understanding of past council uh suggestions of how the urban growth boundary might be modified. You can see here in context with the other boundaries. Um and I can also go back up to the slide that just has the urban growth boundary by itself, which is here. So all of the orange line is your existing urban growth boundary and the dashed line would be potential changes to this. So um these these are the changes to the urban growth boundary that we're interested in, your feedback are.
Okay, so I'll I'll go to each council member to see if um there's any input, suggestions, and I'll start with um, see, I think it's Councilmember Jones?
Uh thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Um so are we just discussing the current urban growth boundary line? Are we talking about all of them right now?
Yes, urban growth boundary.
Okay, as far as where we propose to move it back to, like on the southern line?
Right.
Okay, um no, it looks good to me. I uh wish we were able to add a little bit more space in the north side, but uh I couldn't know why we can't right now. Um so yeah, I'm good with it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Kim. I I I'm, we're discussing the dotted line, correct? The one that we've actually uh proposed earlier?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm I'm still okay uh with that and with the Pioneer uh the way it's set in right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert. Excuse me, Councilmember Yannis?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Kim. Yeah, I'm uh I'm probably with everything else, uh I continue to agree with the moving the line north to Pioneer. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh the only other thing I'd like to bring out is uh at the most eastern portion of 152, uh just below um San Luis Canal and Arroyo Canal, there's a cutout there that has a dotted line around it. I believe that's also uh it's it's in our uh area of interest, but there's already existing uh businesses on that property. So it would make sense that that would be in um the city limits as well.
Right, so it is in the sphere of influence and um it is in the incorporated city limits. So it's already annexed into the city. Um it uh was done so to incorporate Holt um into the incorporated city limits. Um and so that was really the justification. It's in the city limits, it's in our existing sphere of influence um to continue to move forward with that being within the urban growth boundary, but prohibiting any further urban growth um beyond that.
Oh, I think you. Um so at this point, Stacy, uh is is there another uh demarcation line that you're ready to discuss on this?
Yes, I'll turn it back over to Joanna, if you wanna move to the next boundary?
I think Councilmember Jones has a quick question.
Oh, I didn't see the hand, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jones? I think you're on mute.
There we go. Uh back over there where uh Holt is at, that strip there, um we wouldn't allow for any new development in those areas that right, even though right now we have some structures there. Uh we would have it restricted for a future bypass fifty or a hundred years from now, whenever that, whenever the state decides to put it in.
And so the land use map, we would keep that consistent there. Are some pockets adjacent to the SR 152 bypass uh that we could put some, potentially some industrial, some compatible uses next to AmeriGas? Um and there is a a um next to Holt that could potentially um that are pockets. Uh but you are correct, we would be preserving that land use designation for this state Route 152 bypass.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Member, uh Councilmember Jones. Are there any other questions of staff by any council member? So just raise your hand, because I think some of us still don't have the hand capacity yet. Yeah, I see none, so we'll move forward, uh Stacy.
Okay. Right, Joanna?
All right, thank you very much. Um so then moving uh kind of outward from the uh urban growth boundary would be the sphere of influence. Again, this is the adopted sphere and so just understanding that any changes, um what what the city would propose to LAFCO would be changes to this yellow line, which is your existing sphere. And so I think the next um boundary to discuss would be this this blue area, which is the proposed sphere of influence according to your staff's recommendation. Um and and as you can see, the the kind of inverse of the sphere of influence in a way or closely related to the sphere of influence is the area of influence. It sounds like you may want to put these independently or you may wanna kind of think about them as uh tools that work together um in in meeting the city's goals. So the but the next boundary out is the sphere of influence, which is represented by the dark blue area. And so the changes, the increase in this sphere is anywhere where you see a difference of the blue area going outside of the yellow area. So again, as has already been observed, that includes this area here that is inside the city limits. If these two areas here, which are intended to extend the sphere to reach up to the bypass alignment, and it includes uh pushing the sphere to the west, um out to a little bit past the Holt Road um and then south to Pioneer. Uh when we look at the city's general plan map, both your current and your proposed general plan map, uh this area includes a no- different, a number of different designations, but also includes some some uh important employment generating designations for the city of of business park and uh industrial uses on that side. Of course, this is also the area where um uh community colleges. Just to familiarize with the area that we're talking about. So those are the differences between your existing sphere of influence and the proposed sphere of influence.
So um I'd I can add a little bit to that. Uh in our discussions with LAFCO, um this bulb here, which um you know, could be the kind of the hood of the car, I guess, if we're uh looking at this kind of like a little race car. Uh that hood, staff felt was necessary to to keep within our proposed sphere of influence. That's the location where we're proposing job generation to occur. Um that within um the previous general plan and what we're hoping to carry forward in this general plan consists of industrial park area. Um it does have highway commercial uses along 152 um that then buffer into industrial and then buffer into an employment park and then commercial, uh additional commercial uses. And so we do feel that it's necessary to preserve that as there are no suitable, um as we see within even the existing, if you look at that yellow uh line, so everything inside of that yellow line, the existing sphere of influence, we don't feel is adequate enough to provide shovel-ready employment generation locations. They need to be um adjacent to um transportation corridors. And we feel that 152 and as close as we can get to I-5 would be the most appropriate location. Uh we did have um an economic study done by Bay Area, excuse me, Bay Area Economics to help us justify the need um for that employment park, that business park. Um so we do have justification. Uh we are updating the data within that study um to help justify to LAFCO that uh that is necessary for the future planning of the city of Los Banes. Um we don't want to continue to only produce housing. We want to produce employment within our community and that's the goal of our future. So I did wanna point out that was an important po- piece uh to city staff to retain. Um then we, the the curvature, why it's curved? I've I've been asked a couple of times, you know, why does that bisect property um up on the northern side? And that's simply because it just follows the path of the proposed bypass. Um on the east side, that sums up, as we previously stated, you know, a question from Mayor Pro Tim Lewis. You know, why is that being proposed within the sphere? It's because it's already within the city limits and to provide consistency. Um and those areas with around the wastewater treatment plant, it isn't necessary. There is no requirement to have city, a city facility within the sphere of influence. Uh but it's already within the sphere of influence. So staff felt, you know, might as well keep it in and and carry that forward um with making sure that the urban growth boundary does not provide any urban development in the area of that buffer space of um the wastewater treatment plant. And then we've already talked about what I call the little tail uh that uh Councilmember Lewis, uh Mayor Pro Tim Lewis um uh brought up. Um and then on the south, uh that was carried forward. It's already within the existing sphere of influence. Urban growth boundary would be held at Pioneer Road. Um and land uses, those land uses south of Pioneer um could be restricted to not allow um residential uses or commercial uses or even industrial at at the wish of the council. Um but I have heard from council a desire, and it was very clear on the March 30th meeting, to move the sphere up um from from staff's technical recommendations. Since it's already in the sphere was just to maintain that, provide future flexibility. Um so I will leave it at that, at the justification of um staff's determination of why, why this is being proposed um with this sphere today.
Yeah, and I I just wanted very quickly clarify something I said earlier. I think it might have created confusion that the college site is here, just to be very clear. So that's inside your existing sphere um rather than a proposed area.
We do have a desire for a hospital, uh just to piggyback off of that, Joanna, uh cause that brings up a good point. There is infrastructure already, city services, that we do provide water and sewer out to the college. And the city does have a desire to have a hospital, a new regional hospital on the west side um of the city, um near transportation corridors to efficiently get citizens in um to a medical facility. Um and so that that was something that had been planned for in the previous general plan in the 2030 and that we're carrying forward. Also helps justify um and validate the city's desire for that bulb to be included in the sphere of influence to help us plan for hu- for future medical facilities.
All right, thank you very much. Uh Director Elms, uh what what is the next area of discussion?
Um I don't know if we could go through the council members just to um get direction on the sphere?
Sure, absolutely. Um Councilmember Jones?
Um yeah, when I first looked at this, I was a little taken back because it was uh the last meeting, but uh after talking with staff, understanding some of the purposes and some of the uh concerns with grasslands, I understand the north end, um the south end where Pioneer is. Um you know, I know council is pretty firm on not having any development uh south of Pioneer and I guess one purpose would be to keep it, would be for uh ag slash commercial uh use. I'm still trying to figure out if that's even a good option to have there. Um anything that's, I I guess, has a heavy business outside of just farmland or row crops and things like that? I'm wondering, you know, how much is that gonna be disturbing those residents there on Pioneer and change the landscape of that area? Um so I'm really concerned about that sphere of influence, south of Pioneer, uh not being moved um to Pioneer, like we mentioned in the last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jones, uh Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you. Um you know, I've spoke to uh the staff and everything and I understand a little bit more and I like the way it's positioned down here. Uh and if I understand correctly, um the, going back to the Pioneer, we we still want to possibly keep the, cause I understand, we we actually were trying to move it up to Pioneer just to keep. But for now, you are, you are trying to keep it. Still, we have the state of what goes in and out, but you're just trying to keep it in possibilities uh from what I understand is correct.
Right, so it's already within the sphere? Right, so it's already within the sphere, already within our adopted sphere, we're not adding more to it. And we would not, with the urban growth boundary, we are, we are defining that Pioneer. There will be no urban growth south of Pioneer. But staff felt it was reasonable to carry that forward and that we could determine, you know, the land uses, the city council has the discretion to determine the general plan land use designations in that area and can determine, you know, you can prohibit, you know, anything other than agricultural uses there. And, you know, if that is your desire, but staff's perspective was, you know, it's already in the sphere and to help provide flexibility in the future.
Okay, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam, Yamas?
Thank you. Again, it's Pioneer, I think direction was given. And it seems like we're not working towards that direction. I understand some of the rationale or some of the reasons offered. But I would ask, is it unreasonable to move it to Pioneer, Director?
No, we can certainly do that, absolutely. That's definitely at the discretion of the council. I would just caution, once, once it is moved, moving it back out will will probably not be feasible in the future.
It'll still be in our sphere of influence, correct? It'll still be within our A L I, so I don't see why that would change anything in the future.
Yeah, it would be in the area of interest, but it would not be in the sphere of influence. So if the city ever had a desire for
I'm having to keep that within the sphere of influence. So it wouldn't change it.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, maybe I'm not understanding, it got choppy a little bit there.
We can continue to have it within the sphere of influence.
Right, staff is proposing to keep that within the sphere of influence and then have the urban growth boundary, not allow any urban development south of that. So keep that banned in the sphere of influence, but not allow any urban development within that, within that ban.
Well, I still don't understand why we can't move it to what the most direct
At the, sure, at the discretion of the council, if that's, you know, the, the majority would like to move forward with moving the sphere up to Pioneer, we can certainly do that.
Okay, is, are there any other questions, Councilmember Lam, Yamas?
No, that was it, thank you.
And so a, as I see it, Stacy, based on the recommendation of council in the past, most recently, is that the the urban growth boundary will be Pioneer and that nothing will be built below that urban growth boundary line. The sphere of influence, I think with the solid yellow line is staff, are you saying that staff is recommending to keep that there? Because I know we've got the, the widening of Pioneer going through from two lane to four lane. So that's, that's going to take up some of this area here, I would assume, where the boundary line is going to be. So that would shorten some of the land use on the southern end of Pioneer. So I, you know, I, I think, just to make it clear for council members, is that, is, this is what we're posing now. We do understand that moving that line further south in the future would be virtually impossible. But we are an ag community. And so the, the southern part of our community within Los Banos and the sphere of influence area is, is still prime ag land and there's still growth going on there, as far as agriculture is concerned. So that's how I understood it when we made this proposal to make that the, you know, the boundary of growth at Pioneer and not, nothing below that. So I, I'm going to go back to each council member to find out if that is their understanding. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Steph, could you kind of give us an argument on what use in the next 20, 30, 40 years would we propose south of Pioneer to keep that sphere of influence where you guys have it drawn out right now? What, what could we put there that would be an added value to Los Banos? And that's what I'm trying to figure out is what's the purpose of keeping it? If we can't figure out anything that would improve that area, that would add value to Los Banos?
So there are within the current general plan land use designation, so the, I'll refer to it as the 2030. The land use designations, there are some commercial there. It does have for schools planned in the area. But staff would then, as I would see the future, it would have no residential component, absolutely none to it. We would redesignate those land uses. And at, certainly at the pleasure of the council, we could put that as an agricultural rural area. It's, it is already in the sphere, so it wouldn't be us pushing out our sphere boundary. And we can bound, bind that area that it'd have to be an agricultural use. It would require an annexation to happen for the city to even have jurisdiction over that area, which there would have to be justification for that to be incorporated. But I do not foresee in the future that that would be any residential component. If anything, the council could set up specific policies within the general, general plan specific to what's in the sphere south of Pioneer. You know, should the sphere stay with that dip down to Phillips, which is Phillips and Middle Road, could provide specific, you know, findings that would be acceptable within that agricultural rural designation. So we could do that if that's also, you know, just a concern of the council. You don't want to see urban development. You've set the urban development boundary, but you want to prohibit even a general plan amendment, which would then require a urban growth boundary amendment to allow for any development. I also think though that, just to remind the council that there are those findings, the seven findings within the urban growth boundary that have to be made in order to amend the urban growth. So it's not easily done. There are findings and justification that would need to be done. But from staff's perspective, if it's the pleasure of the council to, to remove that dip in the sphere, that existing sphere line, I don't think we necessarily have a, an objection other than, you know, we didn't want to close the opportunity for flexibility for, for the future of the city as, you know, as the, as the city continues to move forward. So that was really the only reason for leaving it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember.
No, please go ahead. Please go ahead, I want to hear what you have to say.
That was one of the, the things that I've learned in this process is, you know, this, this whole process of expanding the sphere of influence is always a process of, of growing in the directions that we need to go. And when you talk about on this particular map, that blue shaded area, we looked at the idea that our growth to the west and the duck bill or the hood of the car out there or in some of the other directions is an opportunity for us to expand flexibility, for us to expand our control over how we incorporate those areas into our future plans. One of my big takeaways from our conversation with one of the stakeholders in this process was generally communities try not to give up land for their sphere of, sphere of influence because they lose that flexibility. So, but I think at the end of the day, we are at the, at the will of the council. And if the idea is to move the sphere up, to reduce the size of the sphere to bring it more in line with Pioneer, we will obviously accommodate that. When we looked at it at the staff level, we thought the best route was moving the urban growth boundary up because it did limit that growth that you had so desired. But it also protected your ability and flexibility to make changes five, 10 years down the road. Because the, the question you, you asked Councilmember Jones is a fantastic question. We're planning in the future for things that we think are needed and necessary. But, but there's that element of the unknown that you are going to be leaving a plan for the next 10 or 20 years for council members down the road and councils down the road to make those decisions and providing that flexibility for that plan. So, but like we talked, we were completely flexible on the idea of moving it up to Pioneer if that's council's desire. We were just trying to preserve our ability to be flexible in the plan and really remain or retain your control over that plan. That's all I have.
Okay. You know, and that's, that's what I'm afraid of, you know, we're thinking 20 years out and not 40, 50 years out. And at some point, if that, we still look at that as a development area or possible development area for whatever crazy idea that council may have 20, 30, 40 years out, at some point, we're going to have houses around it. And I keep saying, where do we draw the line? We start eating more and more of our ag land, especially our prime ag land, where we have good water, especially on the south of Pioneer. Before long, long after we're gone, we're not going to have any more farmland and we lose our identity as a city. So I, I think we need to make a firm line that our sphere of influence stops at our urban growth boundary at Pioneer all the way straight across. I'm still kind of confused on that little boot that we have there between Los Banos Creek and Madera Road. Be nice if we can get some clarification on what was the intended purpose of that and why that exists. It's just kind of an odd little parcel out there. But that's where I stand on Pioneer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Lambert?
I, I vaguely remember back when we were discussing this during March. I believe we did set the urban at, at Pioneer, but we did move the sphere not quite up to Pioneer, but I think we dropped it down just a little, just to, just because of the widening of the road. But I believe this is another, I'm not sure what this road is that's in between or right here on this, but I believe there is a road there, correct?
There is, that's Middle Road. Middle Road does not go all the way across east to west. Phillips Road is on the east side of Mercy Springs. And then on the west side, it is Middle Road. But it generally follows Middle Road and generally follows parcel lines in that area. And that's, and it's already within the sphere. And I think Gary made a really good point in, in staff's perspective of, you know, wanting to restrict the sphere of influence and already what is in the, you know, the already adopted sphere of influence. That is why we kept that, there was discussion kind of back and forth in March about leaving it south. I think where it ended up landing was at Pioneer. But when staff looked at it again, we felt it was reasonable to keep it at Middle Road, the sphere to provide flexibility for the council.
Okay, so right now, our sphere is Middle Road, correct?
It is, that's our adopted, LAFCO adopted, so that is its actual boundary, that's where it sits today. So if you look at this map and all of that yellow area, what's in blue is what we're pushing out.
Correct.
And in that area on the south, we're just suggesting to keep it consistent, that status quo.
Okay. Well, I'm, you know, me, if it's, I don't see us in the, as long as we keep our urban development line there. I'm not saying it might happen, but maybe we, we are going to be able to protect the owners in that sphere also with someone else not coming in and developing if we keep it in that sphere. But I, I'm, I'm okay if the rest of the council wants to move it up to Pioneer, I'm okay with that. I, I myself, we've already got it there, we can just, I would just leave it there also.
Okay, Councilmember Lambert, Councilmember Yamas?
I think, I think Councilmember Jones made some very good points. In these points, we've talked about rationale about moving these boundaries back in March. I don't think anything's changed from the perspective of council. I think the only thing that has changed is a lot of discussion with staff, tensions of what staff wants to do irrespective of what the council has decided. And that's somewhat concerning. I understand the rationale, I understand the options. But we talked about this and again, I think it's leaking at to the Pioneer boundary, which is not reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lambert. When I look at this map and where we are with city limits and also the adopted sphere of influence, we have quite a bit of land still at the north for any additional residential designation as well as industrial. And also proposing, as Stacy, Director Elms has indicated, front of the car hood going west out to Volta Road. As I understood it, and, and, you know, as another council member wants to correct me on this, I thought we had made it very clear that Pioneer Road would be the adopted boundary line and that there would be no growth beyond that. So I'm not sure why we need to leave that open for future sake of the city. And, and I too would like some clarification where the Los Banos Creek is, that little boot at the bottom, why we need to have that there? And can we clean that line up as well? And just make Pioneer be straight across as the boundary line for our city, city boundary. So I, I think that was kind of the clarification with staff, I mean, to staff that we wanted to keep as much agriculture within our community as possible. And to, to also with, with the growth areas that we have a little bit going north, east, small section and the bigger section for industrial going west, that that small portion down there would be insignificant for the growth of Los Banos. So I think once we get through this presentation and, and council's ready to give staff direction, we can address that at that point. So we'll move forward. Director Elms is, is, I'm sorry. We have a hand up from our acting director, city manager, Breezy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. We hear you loud and clear and we have no problem adjusting the updated sphere of influence up to Pioneer Road to be in line with the urban boundary. We can accomplish that, no problem. Looking at that boot, if you will, at the creek, I don't see a significance in it looking at, at a larger scale map of it. We can certainly go back and clarify its purpose back in the day. But we are prepared to take the direction that we can move the adopted sphere of influence up to Pioneer Road and make it one straight line that follows the urban growth boundary to the west and then connects back up to the approved SOI, the yellow line. and then connects back up to the approved SOI, the yellow line on the east side. And I think that's sufficient. And then we can move the AOI up to connect to that line so that we have that area of influence in between what that blue area is now. That's totally okay with us. We have to have these conversations. It's been a good conversation. Appreciate the council's input.
Thank you very much. So are, are we ready to move into another boundary areas, Director Elms? Or do we move on to the next phase of the proposal tonight?
Yes, I think we just want to confirm with the council on the area of interest and moving forward with that tool. That would be a new concept within the general plan and would be solidified within the city's revenue sharing agreement with Merced County. And that would outline that consultation process that would happen anytime development or land use changes would be proposed within that hatched green area. So that city, the city has the ability to be consulted in those areas.
Okay, so I'll check with each council member to make sure that they're okay with those areas that have been designated for the area of interest for the city of Los Angeles. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I'm good with as it lays.
Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
I'm okay with how it lays. And also just again, one more time, clarify the area of interest. That's, all that's going to do is just put us in a discussion if something's correct.
Right. It cannot be annexed into the city because it would be outside of the sphere of influence. So it's not eligible for annexation to be considered at LAFCO. But what it does allow, the goal is to be able to work with the county and consult with them when development is proposed or land uses are proposed, different land uses are proposed in that area. We would be consulted.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else? Councilmember Lambert?
No, ma'am. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Yamas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll get the AOI's line.
Thank you very much. And I'm, I'm certainly okay with it as well. So Director Elms, what would be the next area of discussion?
So I think we have clear direction on the urban growth boundary. So I can summarize and kind of recap this discussion just to make sure that, that we are all on the same page. I think we are good with the urban growth boundary. I think staff is, is good with the direction to move forward with what's proposed. On the sphere of influence, we will be cleaning, the direction of the majority of the council is to clean the sphere of influence line on the south and bring that up to Pioneer. So to remove that little boot out by Los Angeles Creek on the west side and also just be consistent and follow Pioneer Road and the urban growth boundary as it connects to the San Luis Canal. So I think that's very clear. I also think it's very clear to continue to move forward with the area of interest boundary as well. So I think Steph, Steph Gottsitt, thank you for the excellent discussion. That little boot, I don't know, I, I did provide a little bit of an explanation that it, that it looks like the intent of that little boot was for a future well site, a water well site. But that has since been moved. And then, just like the wastewater treatment plant, it is not necessary to have a city facility in the sphere of influence or even in the city limits, for that matter. So we are allowed to have city services outside the sphere of influence. So it's not necessary to keep the boot. It, it was kind of odd that it was in the previous or in the existing sphere and we would be happy to clean that up. I think it, we've heard loud and clear. Thank you for the discussion. And I think we can move forward to our next topic if council's ready.
Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you very much. Another topic that we wanted to discuss with you tonight is the topic of agricultural mitigation. So we've just been looking at planning boundaries and this shows, this image shows you how the planning boundaries that we've been discussing map onto categories of farmland that are identified by the California Department of Conservation through their Farmland Mapping and Mitigation Project. So they use categories of prime farmland, which is this kind of light green color, farmland of statewide importance, which is the darkest green color, farmland of local importance, which is a little bit brighter, like more towards a neon type of green, and then unique farmland, this kind of a brown shade. Grazing land is this orange shade. So one of the reasons that we showed these categories on this map is that these are the categories that we're required to look at under the California Environmental Quality Act or CECL. When we do the environmental impact report that I mentioned on the draft general plan and its boundaries. So impacts to these categories of farmland that are within the city's proposed sphere of influence, which again is this purple line, will need to be analyzed in the environmental impact report. And again, we're required, under state law, to consider feasible mitigation measures for any impacts that we identify, including impacts to farmland. So this map just starts to give you a sense, and this is, you know, not taking the place of the analysis in the EIR, but one early indication of the types of analysis that we will do in the EIR much more thoroughly. And, and areas where we anticipate it's likely that there would be impacts to farmland identified. We also need to be cognizant, especially given the discussion that you just had, that the sphere of influence must be, it's going to be proposed by the city, but then it must be approved by LAFCO. At the time that LAFCO considers any amendments here of influence there, they also want to see that the city is demonstrating, according to their policy, efforts to direct growth away from concentrations of prime agricultural land. That's the wording of the LAFCO policy. In addition, when we think about policies to protect agriculture, you know, both LAFCO staff and Merced County staff has suggested to us that the Merced County policies to protect agriculture could provide some useful guidance to the city to consider in their own general plan. Those county policies include implementation of an agricultural mitigation program in cooperation with the six incorporated cities in Merced County. That would ultimately require any acre converted to urban development to be replaced with a farmland acre placed under permanent preservation, most usually through a conservation easement. The county also emphasizes that they would like to formalize city-county agreements that concentrate new development in cities rather than in the unincorporated area. And in cities that include agricultural mitigation and avoidance of productive agricultural land conversion. And the county also has statements that they will support the efforts of various public and private and nonprofit organizations to preserve agricultural areas. Again, a common tool for this is a conservation easement. So that's just one example of some policies that are in place in Merced County. Other agricultural areas in California use a variety of additional concepts. The idea of one-to-one replacement, some communities actually use a different, larger ratio of replacement is relatively widespread outside of Merced County. Common tools include buffers and easements that protect farmland. So a buffer area that's not farmed, that's neither farmed nor developed in between active agricultural land and new development, especially residential development. Right-to-farm ordinances, which include informing buyers of new property about the agricultural practices that are already existing in their area that they're moving into. That might include, you know, dust or spraying or noise or other types of activities that are typical of farming operations, but may not be familiar to new residents moving into the area. Mitigation fees, so instead of or in addition to requiring acreage to be replaced at a one-to-one ratio or mitigated, I should say, at a one-to-one ratio. Some jurisdictions also include fees that they charge for every acre of ag land that is consumed by urban development. And then typically that money is then used to support agricultural preservation efforts. And then finally, thinking about parcel sizes. So generally, the larger minimum parcel size, the less feasible that that land is for any kind of urban development. So when you, if a jurisdiction, for example, allows parcel sizes of five acres, that land is, is more easily converted to type of ranchette development or kind of estate homes type of residential development that then consumes agricultural land. Whereas most often when we see land that is zoned to allow much larger minimum parcel size, say a 40-acre minimum parcel size, it's much less feasible to develop that land with residential uses. And it tends to be more likely to stay in agricultural use. So those are the types of concepts that we could explore as potential both policies in the general plan and or potential mitigation measures for impacts to agricultural lands that we anticipate we are likely to identify in the environmental impact report. We would propose to use the environmental impact report to explore some of these concepts and their feasibility as mitigation for agricultural impacts. And we also wanted to get the council's reaction to these types of ideas because they can also be included as policies in the draft general plan. So we want to gauge your comfort level on these different policy concepts. And again, these policies would be potentially expressed in the draft general plan released later this fall, as well as considered as potential mitigation measures in the environmental impact report released hopefully early next year. We'd love to, so we're going to be exploring these concepts in much more detail. And again, as Stacy said, continuing to gather stakeholder feedback on these policies and refinement. But of course, we want to start with you and your ideas or reactions to these.
Hey, thank you very much. And I'm going to take it back to Director Elms. Are there any further comments from you? Or do I, should I go on and take it to council member for questions?
Well, I do appreciate you bringing it back to me. It's just a real high level. These are concepts that this would help guide staff in developing policies. As Joanna said, that would be incorporated into the general plan. These are staff's recommendations to move forward. And we just want to make sure that we are on the same page as the council to consider these policy concepts within the general plan, which will help us then form potential mitigation or analyze the feasibility of mitigation within our environmental document. So it's really just a check-in for staff with the council and to answer any questions because we know that this is a really technical topic. The preservation of agricultural resources is an important topic. We've heard the council state today and in previous meetings how important our agricultural uses are to our community and also a part of our identity of our community. So we are definitely sensitive to that. I also want to note that a lot of our, the feedback that we received from our stakeholders included the encouragement of, and the desire to see policies with, within our general plan that addressed that loss of farmland and those agricultural resources. So staff felt that it would be wise for us to provide those policies within the concept. And, and that's staff's recommendation. And we are just looking to check in with the council to make sure we're on the same page.
Thank you very much. So I will start with council members for any comments or questions. And I'll start with Councilmember Jones.
Thank you. I think it all looks pretty good on the policy concepts. Other than one thing I'd just like clarification on, the one-to-one replacement of farmland or nether established ratio. This would be as if we have a new development or new annexation coming in, correct me if I'm wrong. And say, once, say the property owner wants to become a developer and put up, you know, say, 100 acres worth of homes in there. They would have to take out and, and preserve the same amount of acreage in farmland where it's, where it would not be developed. Is that correct?
Right. They would have to place that farmland somewhere else of the same classification. So if that was 100 acres of prime ag land, they would need to place 100 acres somewhere else in an agricultural easement, a conservation easement that would preserve that land to remain in prime ag land agricultural production for its future. So yes, that's, it's so, it has to be a like-for-like is typically what we see. So the same classification, you couldn't just pick another 100 acres that is just grazing land that doesn't have, you know, and that originally where development is proposing to occur is prime ag land. You wouldn't be able to then put a conservation easement on grazing land. It would need to be the same characteristic.
Okay, so would that would be, would that fall within our sphere of influence or our area of interest?
Um, sphere of influence.
Sphere of influence. So, so what we're proposing to expand our sphere of influence, our future development, realistically, only half of that could be developed on, not the full 100%.
No, so, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Joanna.
Well, I was just going to say that I have seen different policies with different criteria for identifying the land that would then be placed under easement as mitigation. So it is an important distinction. Stacy's exactly right that you need to kind of replace like with like. But some policies will say that it needs to be within a five-mile radius. Or other policies might say it needs to be somewhere within the same county. So there are different criteria that you can use for identifying where the replacement land can be located. It's not always a criteria that it's within the sphere of influence.
Right. And I would suggest that our policy would probably state that it should not be in the sphere of influence so that we're not just kicking the can down the road. We would want to identify the preservation of agricultural land outside of where we would be proposing any urban development or any projected growth so that that land is protected from urban development. That's really the intent of that one-to-one replacement is to, is to protect the future of that agricultural land.
Okay, so if we have a developer on the north side that has land and they're going to develop and now we know we're not developing South Pioneer, if they have land on the south side, they can use that, right, as a credit, a one-to-one credit to offset it?
That, that is how we would see, we would firm that up with then, with how those policies would work within language of the general plan. But as we envision it, that's exactly what would probably be acceptable.
Okay, and then, okay, that, that would work for me. I just, you know, if we're, as a city, as we grow up further, you know, 50 years from now and we start trying to push more north, we're going to get more kickback from grasslands, which is granted. So it seems like our furthest boundary north should be areas where we do the exchange from too. So since we're, we can't develop it, the areas on the north, or I mean, on the south side of Inter Miller, where the area of influence is, start using that up as, as preserve. And that might make- And that might make grasslands and some of our water districts, uh, happy with, with that. So just kind of a thought there, but I like that we can use the area of interest as usable ground for that, for that one-to-one exchange. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jones. And before I go to Councilmember Lambert, um, Director Elms and, uh, Joanne, could you clarify? I, I thought that LAFCO had a one-to-one policy within their organization, uh, about the exchange of ag land. And from what I understand, and correct me if I'm incorrect, that the one-to-one exchange didn't necessarily have to be in Merced County or an adjacent county, that it could be anywhere in the state of California. Um, so what staff is suggesting to us is that we have our own one-to-one policy, uh, depending on the, the land designation, whether it's prime or local land of importance or what have you, um, to further solidify how we want that to move forward as far as the exchange is concerned.
Um, I can just jump in real quick Joanna, uh, just to clarify that LAFCO does not have an agricultural preservation mitigation policy. Uh, but the Merced County General Plan does. Um, and what, um, direction and encouragement we've received from our stakeholders, um, not only at the county and at LAFCO, um, the Farm Bureau as well, and our, our water districts would be to follow Merced County planning policies, that that would be acceptable. Um, so I just want to note that LAFCO does not have a policy, or, or, but they are encouraging the city, uh, to move forward with considering a policy. Um, so I'll just leave it at that. And Joanna, I don't know if you wanted to add, um, to answering?
No, that, that was exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that clarification. Okay, we'll go to, um, Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, uh, so, okay, I'm going to get this. So on the one-to-one replacement, maybe I'm, I'm not understanding exactly how that ratio works, but say the, the farm owner has one hundred acres. That's all he has, and he's just going to turn it into, uh, uh, development. So how does this one-to-one ratio, uh, affect him then? If he's not, if, if he's just straight going to turn in that hundred acres as a development?
Typically, there would be an option for an in-loof fee. So if he doesn't have the ability to preserve land of, of, um, you know, a like-for-like or, or the same, um, a one-to-one, the, so another hundred acres, he would pay an in-loof fee. Those would be mitigation fees to, um, typically a conservation bank for agricultural, um, conservation. So that's how that, that issue is addressed.
The, the, the property owner would have the option of going out to see if he could find another hundred acres and buy a conservation easement on those hundred acres. Um, and if that's not feasible, yeah, Stacy says some, some of these programs do include an in-loof fee, um, option.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Lambert. And I'm going to piggyback off of him as I did with, uh, Councilmember Jones. Um, he made reference to the farmer, uh, possibly being the contractor as well. But if the farmer sells his, his or her land to a contractor for development, is it the contractor's, um, duty to go out and find the hundred acres? Or is it the seller of the land that has to find the, uh, hundred acres?
Typically, it would be the developer.
Okay.
So, and that's where the, um, burden would fall. The condition would be laid upon, would be at the time, um, of, say, annexation. And that's typically done by the developer, um, not the farmer. So in, in, in typical circumstances, that would be a burden on the developer, um, because they are proposing development. Um, it's usually not, uh, the, the farmer who's in the business of development. There are some cases, and we do have local, uh, farmers that are also developers that do both, uh, but then they'd have the ability, um, um, to be able to find that replacement.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving forward, uh, Councilmember Yamas.
Thank you, Mayor Proten, Bob. Since fee, could you pop a little bit more about the amount we're talking about?
Sure, so, um, and Joanna, um, I mean, you've seen different policies throughout the state, but typically that, um, a, a suitable mitigation fee would be based on the value of land. So where that loss is occurring, what the value is, the, it, that would be the fee, would be the replacement based on the value of that land. Um, and there are different, um, conservation easements, um, throughout the state of California. Um, and I know Joanna knows of different, um, east, uh, particular conservation easements specific for agriculture. Um, I know the Farm Bureau works with, um, one particular land bank. Um, I don't know if you want to add to that Joanna?
Well, I think yes, in terms of the, the amount of the fee, um, similar to other fees that the city has in place, something that needs to be determined, um, you know, based on an accurate understanding of the current value of, of the land, of the land that's being, uh, developed and then the land that would be placed under the easement. So A, it can vary and B, it, um, is something that's going to need to be regularly updated because as people know, the value of land is going to fluctuate. Um, so it'd be something that need to be kept current. Um, you know, but I, I would imagine it would be several thousand dollars per acre. But I really can't get any more precise than that. And it would take much more, you know, specific research and understanding. Um, and yeah, so in terms of conservation easements, there's different organizations that can hold, uh, these easements. It's an agreement, uh, that runs with sort of the property. It does not run with an individual owner. It runs with the property. Most of them are in perpetuity. Um, and they restrict the activities that can take place, um, on the land. And so they need to be administered, um, and kind of managed by an organization that can keep track of those agreements and make sure that the terms of those agreements are being honored uh, so that the land continues to be used for agricultural production. Uh, that would be the intent of placing the easement, um, on it. So there may be, uh, like a land trust organization, for example, um, an agricultural land trust, uh, that would be managing the easement going forward.
And, uh, who would create and, and man or assign personnel for these trusts? Is that something that the city does or the state does?
That, that would be the organization that manages, um, the easement. So, uh, in many cases, these are nonprofit organizations, for example.
Um, my concern is that the unintended consequences of, you know, which I agree with, the, the farmer, uh, but, uh, having just, uh, corporations or individuals who are at the higher tier, being able then to be able to participate in development because of the one-to-one or the fee. So it's just a comment, but, uh, no, I'm glad that we're, we're solidifying these practices with, uh, all stakeholders to understand what's required and what's involved with the city or staff, or also what the, how to enforce these things. Thank you very much.
I do want to note, um, if I may, that, um, Williamson Act, um, can also be used, is also supported typically, um, as providing, um, that coverage, that, that easement over that land, putting it within a Williamson Act. Um, typically, that is for a long-term preservation for agricultural purposes. So that is used as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Yamas, um, and Director Elms. Uh, where do we proceed from here? Do we have another portion of the presentation?
I think we're really wrapping up what our discussion, um, which I appreciate. Um, all of the discussion today has been extremely meaningful. Uh, this, this is a very technical piece of the general plan. And we received, um, excellent feedback and discussion from the council this afternoon. So I appreciate all of that discussion. Um, and we will be taking that feedback, that discussion, that direction. I think what we heard here on, um, agricultural policies is that staff is on the right, um, path and to continue forward in developing those policies into the draft general plan. So we'll be providing, um, those policies in that draft that will be coming out, um, to, and it will be coming out to the public for review, um, as well as, um, out to the council and Planning Commission. And I see, um, Councilmember Jones has his hand up.
Yes, and, um, just before I get to him, I, I just wanted to indicate that on the, uh, uh, city meeting, coming, come up with a policy on one-to-one versus what the county has in effect right now. Um, if, if there's something that we need to look at more specifically that's going to be advantageous to our community, uh, that the county has overlooked, um, that might be something, uh, I think would be, uh, you know, in, in the best interest of the city of Los Banos. So I don't know what the, the county policy is as a whole, but if there's something that's going to make it a, a bit better for us as, uh, our, for our community, I, I would, uh, like to see staff look at that and, and, you know, bring that information back to council.
Actually, uh, Mayor Proten, Louis, you bring up a very good point. We are analyzing other communities and just what is happening, um, what other communities are doing with policies, agricultural policies up and down the state. Uh, Police Works has a, a really good, um, thumb on the pulse of what is happening, um, in the state. And we, we will be bringing back based on that analysis and research and what we feel would be most suitable for our community.
Thank you, Director Elms. So thank you for that encouragement. And I'll go to Councilmember, uh, Jones.
Yes, uh, Director Elms, um, are we going to require the same one-to-one replacement? Say if, uh, just as an example, Amazon, uh, Distribution Center, if they wanted to come in, are we going to require them to do the same? Or are we going to make, uh, allow council to have discretion on if we need to make concessions to them to get the business in?
I think that would be a part of the analysis that we would research. Um, uh, what discretion the council has. I have seen different policies with different communities. Um, I don't think that that would probably, at the end of the day, be justified as, uh, fair and equitable in preserving, uh, the la, the loss of agricultural resources. But we would need to analyze, um, in that situation, what, what would the council be able to do? Um, we ob, we obviously wouldn't want to discourage that, uh, type of development in our community. Um, but we also recognize that, um, you know, agricultural land is important. It's important for the future of California. It's important for the future of our community. Um, so staff would, would analyze that and, um, we would bring that back as a policy to the council. But we haven't quite analyzed how we would, in different situations, um, develop the policy yet.
Okay, I just, you know, hope that we have as much flexibility when it comes to an economic catalyst for Los Banos. Because it comes knocking on our door and we're too stubborn to open it over, um, a replacement of ag land. Um, you know, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot because, I mean, let's face it, we can build houses all day long and I don't think any of us would lose any sleep if we never built another house again in Los Banos. But, you know, what we're dying for is industry, business, jobs, tax revenue source that is non-residential. So I just want to make sure that we're not too rigid on our policies to where we don't have room to be flexible for whatever big business wants to come in.
Absolutely, we appreciate that feedback and that will help us, um, with our analysis.
Thank you.
Hey, and, and with that, uh, Director Elms, I, I think one of the things that was recommended, that if, uh, uh, the one-to-one ag land could not be found, that there, there is possibility of, uh, a fee exchange for that, which might, might be the alternative for, uh, some of the large businesses that might consider. And, um, I, I think, uh, Joanna had mentioned that maybe in, in some of the other areas that, uh, she's had studies on, that it, it may be like a thousand dollars an acre, which is really a small amount of money to pay if, if that's what the city determines is reasonable for us as we move forward. Um, so there, there are other alternatives that we can look at other than just, you know, a, a large corporation going out and finding other ag land to replace, um, what is being, uh, taken up, uh, in the city of Los Banos for development of, of, uh, job markets. Uh, Councilmember Jones, did you have another statement in your hand? It's still up.
Oh, I need to take that down, but I, I will comment on that too. One thing that we also need to look at is, uh, you know, thousand dollar an acre as a, uh, as a fee is, is minimal. It's nothing really, but I'd hate to get somebody on the other side that's wanting to bring in the business and saying, hey, I don't like that. I'm not going to come in if we got to pay that. And the way that I would look at it is, what do we plan on making off the back end of the big business coming in? Is it a lot more than what we're collecting on the front end? And I think that's where I'm saying, I hope council will have a final say on the flexibility there, on what fees are waived or what concessions are made, things like that. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, any last comments, uh, uh, Councilmember Lambert?
No ma'am, I'm good here, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Councilmember Yamas, any last comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Director Elms, uh, is there any clarity that you need on, um, uh, the agriculture land preservation policy? Are we good to go?
I think, um, Joanna had a comment.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, I do just want to, I don't, I don't want to leave you with any confusion. I, I think picture statement, any kind of statement about dollar amounts or what the fees might be. Again, I just want to say that's going to require analysis. And so please do not, uh, get stuck on any numbers. What I did say earlier was that I would imagine, I would guess, that it would be in the realm of several thousand dollars. So I just didn't want to leave the, the meeting with you guys feeling like, um, you had heard a specific amount for me. I think it's, it's very premature to talk about any specific amount. Um, yeah, so just want to clarify that. Thank you for, um, I.
Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, um, again, Director Elms, uh, is there any other information that you need clarified from council?
Um, I think we are good. Uh, Joanna, if you could just give me a thumbs up. I think, I think from my end, we're good. Joanna's good. Um, again, thank you so much for all the participation today on this technical subject. Uh, we're making strides, um, in the progress of our general plan update. And we look to hitting the streets with our draft soon.
All right. Okay, well, um, if there's nothing else, I assume that we're moving forward to item seven of our agenda tonight, which is the adjournment of the meeting. And, uh, I will entertain a motion for the adjournment. Somebody would raise their hand and open their mic.
Councilmember Lambert here. I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion? Can I have a second, please?
Yamas here, I'll.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, a second by Councilmember Yamas. And, uh, we'll have a, well, I don't know that we have a roll call. Is Lucy, is, is she still here? I guess she's not. So I'll call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Lambert?
Yes.
Councilmember Yamas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Louis? Yes. And with that, uh, I'll adjourn the meeting at six oh five P M. this evening. And thank you all so much for your time and for all the hard work. all so much for your time and for all the hard work to bring this presentation. Good night.